Go ahead and call the order and give a, have a word of prayer, please. Father God, we just thank you for today, Lord. We just ask that you would be here with us, Lord, that you would meet, that you would lead in each and every one of the sort of decisions that we make for this city. Father, we ask that you would be with our police officers. We ask that you would be with our EMT and our fire department, Lord, our servicemen here and overseas, Father God, and enable them to do the best that they possibly can. Put your hedge of protection around them, Lord. And we just thank you, Father. We ask in Jesus' name. James, could you lead us through this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the included republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is the, um, I did approve, um, asked Martha to-
I'd like to amend, amend the agenda for tonight. We're gonna be adding 9D for the sidewalk repair.
In doing, in adding the sidewalk repair, it's in addition to, as four other places, in addition to what's currently being repaired right now, and if we do it while we're having it poured, it'll save us money. So that's, that's the purpose of adding that to this evening. Okay. Can I get a motion to-
Oh, we got, yeah.
Can I get a motion to amend the agenda to add the sidewalk repair?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. David, Paul Vayner, unanimous, thank you.
And then I would like to add 9E, the MAXIS Engineering.
We got this late this afternoon. This is the dollars for MAXIS Engineering. Have you seen those? Um, at the top of this, um, at the top of this email, you'll see what the charges are for. Um, it's for, uh, it's for all type meetings with the city and Evan for the private sewer line, the located private sewer line, coordinating and conducting private utility locations, coordinating and conducting additional surveys, as-built elevations, meeting with me on the Johnson property where we've got water shooting into the back of the properties, and update on the attempt to curb easement areas. Can I get a motion to approve, um, the $9,800 for MAXIS Engineering for the services? Or just, I mean, I'm amended, sorry, for amending it for those dollars. James, James, Paul Vayner, unanimous, thank you. With those minutes, can I get an approval for the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
James, do you second it?
I second it.
Martha, Paul Vayner, unanimous, thank you. Um, so, public appearance, do we have anybody that would like to, um, does anything to say, to say? Steven?
Are you gonna say something about the-
Oh, I didn't know if you wanted me to do that then.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do it now. I'm Steve Johnston. Earlier this week on Wednesday, Lieutenant Downey and I met over at the site for the community garden, and we got that all tilled up. We put down 200 pounds of fertilizer that was recommended from the Cherokee County soil sample test that we did. So we got that done. We basically had 9,000 square feet over there, and we figured that we basically probably have enough room for 50 to 60 12 by 12 plots for people in the community. I've gotten several requests about water, and that's probably their big, a lot of people's concern. Now, you have the old police building there that is, I believe, coming down, and there is a water meter there. I was going to ask if I could get permission to tap into that water source, and we could use that for people to use to water the garden. That's what I'm looking for.
He had sent something in today here this last month, and I told him it was better to purchase this way.
Yeah.
Anybody have a, have a problem with that? Because we already have a water.
I think our water bill right now is like 10 bucks on the line. We've got them all in place, so probably expense-wise, it's not much of anything.
It wouldn't be used until next year.
Just the water meter.
But I would like to get it done maybe before then. If that's true.
Okay, so that's a yes for, um, for David, a yes for James, Martha?
I don't mind.
Nathan?
I have a problem with that.
Susan?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else for public hearing?
Do you want to stick that, he's being kept on the side? Is that somebody requesting that?
Yeah, we can have discussion about that. So, um, we sent in the approval, so council members, we sent in approval for, or we sent in the bid this afternoon, Kelsey did, um, but we wanna know what that's gonna, do you want everything taken out? Do you want the, um, the concrete removed?
I can't argue with you guys, so I don't know what you're talking about. The old police building over there, the request for bid was sent in today for the community building and the police building.
There we go.
Um, that's just the, the ad that runs in the paper, but the bid packet itself, um, the community building, we're gonna keep the concrete pad. Are you wanting anything salvaged from the police building? Because I know somebody had said something about bathrooms at some point there, since we already have septic system in place. If there's any-
I wanted to put the septic in the deal. You know, we're making a septic project.
Do you wanna leave any of the concrete or any of the bathroom, any of that stuff there? Because I know the right side of the building was in much better shape from the left side. But if there's anything that's gonna be salvaged, or anything that's gonna be left, any of the power sources, any of that, I need to know in the next few days, because I have to get the, um, the stipulations, the specs page.
I think I'll have to look at it. I've never been in a, you know.
Yeah, we, we need to probably think on that, you know? I don't think if you wanted to tear a bunch of stuff out that you might have to put back in.
That's exactly what I was thinking, so.
So that's why the cameras are being housed, and that's why she's asking that, correct?
Yeah, we have, that's our power sources for the cameras right now. So if we're gonna salvage any of it, then if we kinda solve some of our power issues, that also, you know, they're gonna need water there, we can-
And listen, I would leave that stuff for now. The infrastructure part of it, because you don't know what's gonna happen next, and you know what-
I need somebody to get their eyes on it, how much you want left, what you don't want left, so I can list the specs.
Can I get a volunteer?
What are we talking about later?
The, the utilities, the infrastructure, you know, if you're gonna leave, uh, if you're gonna leave, uh, the bathrooms, if you're gonna leave any of the concrete, if you're gonna leave power there and just tie it off at the top, if you're gonna leave the water, um, David said leave the septic, because septic's quite inexpensive. You go back in and we do something up there, when we do our master park plan, then we're gonna have to move away from bathrooms there. So can I get a, can I get a, somebody that would go and, and take a look at that and report back?
I don't know.
Susan, can I get somebody else?
When, uh, when do we do it?
We can do it whenever you want. There's keys here, Ricky has keys. We have, we have training tomorrow in Gainesville, it's just daytime, we'll be driving and coming back. There's keys here, Ricky has keys as well, um, so just whenever you wanna go in, there's, you know, whenever you wanna make time to go down there. The power should still, I mean, we're still taking the power bill, so.
I don't think we'd ever leak the power unless we leak all the building.
Well, I know, yeah. At one point, somebody had said, and I think it was when they were still working on the asset, police building, there was talk about just removing the left side, the old portion of it, because I know there was a bunch of termite stuff, and trying to salvage the right, which, I don't know if that's even feasible, but if, if there's anything that's gonna be left, I mean, no.
Or we'd wanna go in and put a, um, a small building there to house, to house some of the-
Equipment.
Equipment, you know, like a shed of some sort. So that would also take away the bad salt.
Do you know how many cameras operate from that building?
Right now, it's just one.
Oh, just the one?
Just the one that's on the building.
And then we're got-
You know, trying to add more to it, and then that was when we ran into issues, and we're on the building, taking down, and that's where the whole solar thing came up. But then cost of that was just kinda out there. But if we can keep power there, then we go a whole other direction.
One day works, good for you, David.
It's usually dark when I get home, but-
Should you do it Saturday morning? Or, early Saturday morning?
About, probably next time, sir.
Okay, so, so Neil-
Or if it rains one night this week, I can do it.
Okay. If you can send a text message to the group, and Susan, you can go with him.
Yeah.
That's, that's good. All right, so we got that, we know that.
The TIs are in the box in the, the room where we have executive sessions.
You have them?
Because I have them running. Well, I'm just saying, so if somebody ends up wanting to go down there, if I'm not here, that's, they're in that box, and that just has police building on the thing.
We can, we'll pull them and put them on the counter for you guys, for the note.
And Ricky hasn't, too, so.
Okay.
Well, any of them, there's another building, his angle too, and stuff.
Well, yeah, there's stuff in the bottom, and you decide what to do with, um, just, there's a few supplies. Somebody has been sticky-fingering some things out of there, so there's not as much as-
You know, there was a lot, she brought down our, uh, mess.
There's a few pieces. The, um, stuff upstairs, the, one of the, it's the Masons, whatever, the other group that's down there, they had taken what they wanted out. I told them to take whatever they want, because it was, kinda their history was tied in it. They took everything they wanted. The stuff that's left that had value, Jeff Dawson's gonna auction. He's gonna come pick it up, and then he'll assemble. It still leaves some stuff that's gonna be in there, so there we could have a minimal yard sale, whatever, because they've signed off everything, and whatever the proceeds are, go back to the museum here. And then whatever's left, somebody can come pick up and donate, or it just gets trashed with them. There are three panels, if anyone-
There's four.
The panels?
Three. Two upstairs and one downstairs.
Oh, there's two, huh?
There's one.
I know, mine's, yeah, there's more, yeah.
So for, for like a yard sale for that, would we need to advertise that?
Dawson doesn't want, Dawson just wants, it's not our stuff. It's not our stuff.
Yeah, it's not ours.
It was just left in there.
Then I would think it would be, we can double.
If you would, it'd just get out of the city right now.
But I think that if it's not open, if it has, there it should be.
It has value, and I, basically, they sent me a letter stating that they're basically writing off anything, they don't want anything, uh, basically all paperwork, and then anything that is sold off, which is gonna be-
Okay, I'll check on it, we value it more.
Thank you. Next is the public hearing for the Water Tower property. If anybody wants to speak with regards to the Water Tower property, there's a sheet in the lobby that you would need to sign up for, and then come to the podium.
And maybe you could give us, um, fill everyone in on, on what's going on, so they know before they talk?
So, the Water Tower property, um, currently, this is, this is as I know it currently. Um, the city has a water tower located on Tinker Street, there is no contract with it. Um, the Georgia Marble Company has been using the water tower since 2006 as a water source for Georgia Marble. Um, we have acquired easements and are in the process of acquiring easements for the project that we're doing on Kennesaw Avenue, on the left end, on the right. Those properties belong to, um, is it Rio?
Lauren lives Evans, and one owns Rio.
One's Evans and one's Rio. Um, Evan would like, I would, should I say Evan would like the Water Tower?
He honestly didn't even know that we were having this stuff on. He hasn't even requested it. The only time that it was even discussed is when he came in and asked if we would trade the entire parcel behind City Hall, or the entire parcel up there. We can't trade the entire parcel because it was, there's a park that we entered. So it was put in, so I mean, it's, I think he's kind of in, you know, it wasn't a request on his part. It's a liability for the city to have it.
So, with that said, um, what we did find out is that the city would need, because there is no contract, the liability falls back on the city. The city is responsible for maintaining it, upkeeping it, right now it's shooting water out, and it's rusty, it has holes in it. So either the city keeps it and we repair it, or we, um, trade those, trade that property to Evan for the easements. And that's what, when we, I guess we spoke about that last meeting?
Yeah, then it's just half of the parcel, if it's not the easement.
It's not, it's not the full parcel, it's not the parking, and it's not the half basketball court. So if anybody would like to have a conversation or ask questions, please come to the podium, and, and also, we need to get your name signed. Should we get a sheet for the podium?
It's on the, the clipboard, on the, where the packets are, by the window.
Do we want them to do that before they come up and see?
I just need them to, at some point, record it.
Okay, so if anybody would like to speak, please feel free.
I just have a question, and that is, I live right next door to them. It's, uh, it does look like it's not very stable, to say the least.
Can I, can I get your name?
Chris Baugh, B-A-U-G-H. I'm just curious.
As, as part of the, um, as part of, as, as part of the deal, there would be, there would be some stipulations in place. I've already spoken to Jeff about it, and that would be having a, they would have to have an assessment, a structural assessment done, analysis, and then it would need to be repaired.
Do they wanna keep it? The water company?
Yeah, if they had to build it another way, it would cost, uh, private money.
What'd they do before 2006?
They used it. It was theirs then.
If it went to the Marble Company, would they maintain it?
That's part of the stipulation that we would have, is that it would be maintained.
That's pretty broad, though. Would that, would there be more definitive descriptions in there, like paint it, repair it?
Um, according to Jeff, uh, the, it would need to be, it would probably need to be repaired, holes see, either sealed or put a liner in it. I know he had talked about putting a liner in it at one time with Kelsey. It would be painted, and it would be, um, you know, so it didn't shoot water out everywhere. And then the council would have to put something in an ordinance that would be able to hold, you know, hold, hold the owner accountable for that, to make sure that it was done and didn't get a disrepair again. That would be done with an ordinance. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I'm, I'm just gonna get up, 'cause it's easier for me to- Chris, if you don't mind, if you could just sign in?
Yeah, I'll sign.
Whatever, you don't do it right now, after the-
Yeah, okay. All right, so, so the bottom line is, we all know, she's a ugly girl, our water tower. And, um, I, I'm, I'm trying to think of leverage, okay? So we know that they want that water to cool off their sauce, speculating. So the, the idea of just giving it to them, or we leverage it for a monthly stifle of whatever that might be, versus giving it away for free, uh, may be in our best interest. Thank you.
And I, and I hear what you're saying. I've had a lot, I'll go ahead and address it. I've had a lot of phone calls over the last month regarding this.
Keeping in mind that the Water Tower belonged to them in the first place, and then they gave it to the city, um, so we would be able to have our own water source. Didn't work out for us, we got water from Cherokee County, right? So with, with that, and with that respect, if it goes back to them, as long, I don't have a problem with that, especially with the easements that they've given the city already. I mean, we have one that, do we have an easement for this?
It wasn't, we were sorry.
Okay, well, we had one in previous council, mayor did not sign it, so that's something we'll have to go back to. But he has graciously given us the easement down Kennesaw Avenue on this side, and he's been in talks with Barry about the easement that's needed for, um, the water that's coming out under the street and, and out, so on this side. So, and, and Evan has done a lot of things for the city, my understanding, without, without-
Nobody really knows.
Yeah, without, without any knowledge, and he, and he doesn't, probably doesn't want anybody to know. But I don't have a problem with him having that problem back. I don't think anybody here does. Does anybody have a problem with having had the property back?
No.
As long as, as long as the, as long as the property is kept up. And I, I understand everybody has issues, because right now, it does look bad. So I, I heard you, and I get it, I know, you know, yes, sir.
That water tower been, been painted one time in 30 years. And it looked like that for years. And everybody in this room that moved here know what their water tower looked like when they moved here. So I don't see what the big deal about the water tower.
Well, the, I think, I think what the people are saying, that I've heard, and it's called me and Rich Bellwatt, and they called the paper, the papers called me. So, the problem is, is that, um, city property belongs to taxpayers, belongs to you, it belongs to everybody in this room that's a taxpayer here in Nelson, and everybody that's a taxpayer has an opinion, right?
Okay, that's true. So if anybody concerned, everybody get them a ladder, and a taxpayer, get them a ladder, and a paper to keep their daughter happy.
And, and well, I respect that, but the problem is, is that they're, they're not benefiting from that water tower, but they are having to look at it, and it is shooting water out of their property, correct?
Only problem, only person water would be going on property deals, Chris, that's the only person. And it ain't that much going on in property.
But I protest.
The only person will give, be getting water if they're not fixed. But everybody else, I can understand it great, but every time you turn around, there's something in the paper about that water tower, tear down!
That's an option.
If, you know, if the city not gonna fix it, tear down!
And like I said, there, there is, there is a, um, there, there will be a contract, and there will be stipulations if those aren't adhered, and they don't agree to, then, then that's, that's an option.
But I think it's more the city can be concentrating on than the water tower.
They can, and there's, but that's a piece of it, right? It's just a small piece of it.
Well, it's gonna be a piece that's out next year.
Yeah, hopefully it'll be, hopefully it'll be, um-
Okay, I hope it-
Hopefully it'll be resolved by then.
I hope it do too, but, you know what, my thing is, everybody know that water tower looked like that when they moved here. So stop griping. When it gets fixed, it'll be fixed. Right or wrong?
We are working on it.
What?
We are working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. If you could sign in the, um, go lead us in.
All right, that's that.
Steve Johnston?
My name's Steve Johnston. My concern is that, so you're going to enforce some kind of rules to keep them following whatever, whatever you set out, but their buildings are in complete disrepair, and nobody's enforcing that whatsoever. So why would they enforce, why would, why would we enforce the water tower issue if we're not enforcing how their buildings look? Who's gonna do that?
And that's a good question. I know that there is, um, I know that there's code violations, and we have spoken with William Porter about, about looking at that and assessing those, so.
Right, but I mean, that, it's kinda like, it doesn't really mean anything if nothing's being done about what they have right now.
I understand.
It's illegal too.
And I agree.
You got the podium, but I would like to remind you, if you slow down just a little bit, you will see that something's happening in there. I don't know what's going on, but they're fixing it up in there. Uh, just a, just a-
I personally don't have the information. I know that, I know that he has spoken to, to Kelsey about it, and if she wants to elaborate, she will.
They've put a lot of money in there. They've put everything, past your neighbors, I would guess, probably closer to a million dollars. But a lot of it is stuff that's internal that isn't gonna necessarily, I mean, you can see the neighbors from the outside.
Right.
But it's, a lot of that is stuff that you're not necessarily going to see as you're driving by it. I know, like, a lot of paperwork and stuff.
Right, I just imagine that in any other city, they wouldn't allow a building that looks like that to stay like that, and that's been like that ever since I've been around, which is not a long time, but long enough. So we're not enforcing that.
Yeah.
We're not using our authority to make sure that it looks nice for our community.
Yeah, and, and, and he is, like I said, he is addressing it. We've given everybody ample time. We've had several heavy hitters in here, some have removed their house, some is working on, on their houses, some's removed porches off of them, but they have, they have, they are working on it.
Okay.
Did I put a timeline on it and say, hey, you have to clean this huge property up in six months? No, I didn't, because the work they're doing on it is, is excessive. Thousands of dollars, so, you know.
That's all I had to say about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I, can you, um, expand on that a little bit? So if, um, there are stipulations on, on the exchange, or, or if the stipulations, I should say, are not agreed upon, what are our options?
Then we'll bring it back to the table, and we'll discuss how to move from there, because the liability is back on the city, it's back on, it's back on us. So do we keep it, do we give them, uh, um, you know, 90 to 100 point days to find another water source, or, you know, there's opt, the city has options. So we, and once we, once we hear back from him, then we'll, you know, we'll have a better idea of how to go forward.
So when are we supposed to hear back?
Um, right now, we, I don't have a date. We are, um, we're, we were waiting on some stuff from MAXIS Engineering, which we have, and, um, they've located, you've located all along, Jeanine, you've located everything, so I can make a phone call this week. Katie, up there, please.
Chief, um, I talked to Evan for about, I don't know, half an hour or so yesterday. Uh, in his defense, uh, he put in, I don't know how much he spent, but some kids threw a bunch of rocks at the brand new windows he put in, and cost him 25 grand in to replace them. And, uh, so he's, you know, from his perspective, he's, he's doing what he can do, and the timing of it, and he has to deal with, you know, things like that from, from the community who, uh, as he fixes it up, people are destroying it, and so I, I think you, sir, must-
Do you have police reports on that?
He knows who, his camera picked it up, it was a child, and, but, you know, kind of in, in his defense, he's, he's, he's doing, he's, he said he's got about a $4 million plan to clean up the property, so.
I knew it was extensive, I just didn't know what it was.
Yeah.
Thanks, Katie. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead, once, twice, three times. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Paul Vayner? Unanimous, thank you, okay. All right, moving on to approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from October the 4th, 2021?
Make a motion up there.
I'll say it.
Paul Vayner? Unanimous, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the, uh, work session minutes from October the 21st, 2021?
Make a motion to approve.
Paul Vayner? Unanimous, thank you. All right, next up, we have department reports. I'm gonna go ahead and have Lieutenant Downey come up, and we are gonna take and move the, um, from new business, uh, number C, which is the tag reader for the cameras. We're gonna move that and combine it, so you guys don't have to, your folks don't have to stay here until the very end, so.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Everybody sees tonight that I brought, uh, some friends to come with me to have some discussions about the flock cameras. We'll cover the, uh, crime report, and then I wanna introduce someone, and then I'll introduce everyone who's involved in this program. But, uh, for the month of October, uh, nothing really big that happened. Unfortunately, we did have a suicide inside the city. Uh, I'm not gonna mention names, but, you know, it's been hard on the family, but we did respond to that. We had a couple of civil disputes inside the county, and a couple suspicious incidents where we responded, and it was nothing, um, out of the ordinary, but, uh, we did have an accident, and this is the first accident I think we've had inside the city of Kennesaw Avenue and Highway 5, so. That's a good thing, we don't have a lot of, uh, accidents in the area. Um, I know that affects insurance rates and things like that, so. But I would like to introduce, this is Sergeant Tim Downing. Uh, he is, I know the previous meetings, I've spoke to you guys about us possibly starting an evening shift in the future, and in order to do that, I need some supervisors at our precinct, so he is gonna be running our day shift, uh, so please welcome him. I know he's excited about the, the transition up here, and he's getting to learn everybody's names and things like that, but feel free to call him anytime, but, uh, put a lot of stuff on his plate, I'm good with that. But he's, he's been with the sheriff's office for seven?
14.
Fourteen, fourteen years. I was gonna say seventeen, but, and it's Downing, not Downey.
I was gonna say, that's a Downing, not a Downey.
Yeah, he's a Downing and not a Downey, so, we, uh, we're glad to have him, so thank you for that. Uh, with our flock cameras tonight, I'm gonna introduce Captain Pete Turcot, he's in charge of our spec ops for the, uh, the entire sheriff's office, which includes the traffic unit, canine, uh, hostage negotiation, just about everything warrant unit, everything you can think of, he's in charge of. So anything specialized, uh, he's in charge of that. Lieutenant Olin Bogner, he's with our criminal investigations division. Um, if we've ever worked a crime and it wasn't solved, this is the guy that you're gonna call, not me. Um, I'll put that burden on him. And then, uh, Ms. Stanton, Alicia Stanton with Flock, um, she is also here as a representative of the actual company. So, I'm gonna turn it over to them, we're gonna discuss, uh, the cameras and how they work, and just kinda educate everyone. Thank you.
Uh, I'll start real quick. My name is Pete Turcot, like you said, uh, I've been with the sheriff's office for twenty-two years. Um, the flock system that I'm gonna talk to you about tonight is one of the best investigative tools that we have ever bought into. Uh, we started out with one flock camera on a mobile trailer, and were able to move it around the county. Uh, since then, uh, we just recently signed up for twenty-eight more flock cameras, because the few that we got, um, off, or the start, have been tremendous, um, in recovering property, recovering stolen property, recovering stolen vehicles, uh, finding missing persons. Uh, one success story that we've had so far is just, was it a couple weeks ago? We had a, uh, elderly gentleman that had the onset of, um, dementia. Uh, he actually, poor old guy, he didn't know what he was getting into, he actually stole a work truck from across the street from his house in Madison. We were actually able to pick up that vehicle on a flock camera, and showed us that he was moving south, um, and he actually ended up getting recovered in...
Monticello.
Mon- I always wanna say Monticello, but it's Monticello. But anyway, so that's one of the success stories, we've caught a couple homicide suspects on the flock system, a lot of people with warrants and stuff like that. But I wanted to, the main thing that I wanted to emphasize to you, that we don't look at it as, as Big Brother, okay? It's, it's a database that we as law enforcement use as a investigative tool. Uh, yes, it does give us alerts, but the people that it gives us alerts to are sex offenders, people that have violent histories, that have warrants on them, it helps us recover those stolen vehicles. What else?
Amber alerts.
Amber alerts. So anytime you, you know, your phone goes off in the middle of the night, I don't know about you guys, but it scares the crap out of me and wakes me up.
Yeah.
All of that stuff, it adds into the flock system. Um, what it does is it has capabilities of reading the, the vehicle tags, and sending it to a database, which we can search after the fact. Or, it can actually send the database, or send the alerts to our officers that are in the field live, most of them have it on their cell phones, and some of them use it on their computers in their cars. So as soon as a vehicle that has an alert on it passes by one of these cameras, the officers in the field get an immediate notice to let us know where that vehicle is and what direction it's going, by the direction that the camera's facing. Um, so we are eventually gonna have, our hopes is to have sixty of those cameras around Cherokee County, so, just because we have sixty in Cherokee County, uh, the great thing about it is, right now in our database, we have sixteen hundred and...
Approaching seventeen hundred cameras.
Seventeen hundred cameras in the system from other jurisdictions that we can pull from. So just because we have a crime that happens here in Cherokee County, if it doesn't hit one of our cameras, eventually it's gonna hit one of those flock cameras, all of our surrounding agencies, uh, Bartow County, Forsyth County, Carterville, uh, Cobb County, there's many different jurisdictions in the state of Georgia that use the same system. We have some that are as far as, what's Tennessee, Memphis?
Yeah, Bart, Bartlett, Tennessee.
Bartlett, Tennessee, so they're all over the, all over the, the United States. Um, so what we wanted to come and talk to you all about tonight is, you know, implementing a few cameras up here in Nelson, and mainly, we wanted to come and answer questions for you, that's why we brought Alicia Stanton tonight. Uh, she's with Flock Safety, um, and she can answer the questions that I can't answer. So, that being said, I'll turn it back over to you, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Um, so councilmen, um, and ladies, um, do you have any questions for, um, for Alicia?
Are they mounted on trailers, or how are they?
They are actually mounted on poles. So he mentioned a speed trailer, um, that's not our common installation, typically on a fourteen foot pole that we would provide.
It's, it's ran by solar power.
Solar power, everything, it's all, it's very discreet too. It's not, it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb, it's black, most of them, very, very helpful.
Other question about placement, and I think we talked a little bit about it out there, is there anybody that would, that would come in and, and look at placement, and then come back and, and have a conversation with the council on that?
Yes, so, as the sales rep, I would work with, we've got solutions consultants who are former, former law enforcement, who can give you a strategic recommendation for where to put the cameras, and it's kind of a combination of, you know, the entrance and exit points of the city with your budget, um, so kind of balances those, but then also, um, these gentlemen can be a great resource as well, since they know this area. You guys know where your bad guys travel, so it would be silly for me not to use their recommendations as well. But yes, we can definitely provide a proposal.
Your dollars per camera?
Uh, so it is a service model, and so it's twenty-five hundred per camera per year with a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar install fee, um, and that's one time. The nice thing about the system with it being a service is that if the cameras go down, our technician comes out to fix it. Um, even if it's, the angle gets slightly adjusted, something like that happens, we're gonna send the tech out to replace it or fix the camera, you guys don't have to worry about it, and we've got, um, measures on the backend to know, hey, this camera's not working. So we can proactively send the tech out before the sheriff's office even knows.
Who has access to these cameras?
It is, access is own, or the owner has access. So essentially, you guys own the footage, and you can choose who has access to it. So typically, in a situation like this, where you guys don't have a police department, you could just get access to the sheriff's office.
We have IDAs with both counties, so we could...
So you can share, grant it, grant us access to...
I would, and what?
Yeah, but I think...
Yeah, so you would just make, uh, share the access with us, so we could access the camera and get the alerts. You would have to set up the hot list for the alerts to come to us, or to Pickens County.
There's somebody that would help you there?
Absolutely, I'm, I'm here for you.
All right. Nathan, have any questions? Martha?
No.
David?
I mean, they're gonna come back with recommendations, how many firms they'll save?
Pickens, I think Miranda, didn't Pickens say they'd want the C2? And then you guys would want the C2?
Absolutely. Look, this system, the more, the more the barrier, but, um, you know, we also understand that you have a budget to work within, so, you know, the more cameras we put in the system, the more, the better the results could get, so it's totally up to you all.
Is there somebody that can coordinate with Pickens County, um, with respect to that, since its flock is one system, is there somebody that can coordinate with Pickens County to see? We have, how many point entrances do we have this city? I know we have one, two, three, four lines.
Or five.
I know we have five, where's the other two?
I'm just thinking it's on the city limit signs. That's how he said he limited signs.
Oh, Rose Mountain.
Oh, five, both directions, and then Applewood Road.
Yeah, type, type cameras to...
It would take a lot to cover ever.
You wouldn't necessarily have to. You wouldn't necessarily have to do that, but if you had, if you had, and he said you don't have to have it only in both directions, you can have, you know, it just depends, maybe we do one or two, but, um, coordinate with, uh, if you could with Pickens County, is there some, do you guys have a contact there?
Absolutely, yeah, we, we should be going to Pickens County next week to talk about their, uh, sites that they would like them to be.
Okay, why don't you guys, um, do that, and then, we have, uh, the next meeting is December the sixth. Uh, maybe you could send me your recommendations before that, to get it out to the council, and then they could have, uh, opportunity to vote on that.
Well, and so councilman, Miranda and I have talked with Steve, this is Floskway government, this is, it's a, um, committee, so through the initial, yeah?
First, yeah. I had, uh, one question, like, the main, the main purpose of the surveillance, would it be like investigative?
Well, I wouldn't look at it as surveillance, so to speak, uh, more for investigative purposes.
Yeah, so like, y'all, it wouldn't be like citations and stuff?
No, absolutely not. Not like a red light camera or speed camera.
And, I can, I've got an email on my, my phone that I can show you, everyone that's on the council, of what it actually takes a picture of.
So right, can I, and you correctly remember, but right now, they have tag readers on some of the cars, I know we gave, uh, we gave our tag reader to you guys, right? So this camera is gonna take the place, yeah, this, this tag, this will take the place of the tag reader, so what he showed me went on his phone, is it homes right in on a tag, not a person or anything like that, it homes in right on the tag, and then alerts them based on that tag and who it belongs to, if it's a stolen vehicle, or it's in the system as a stolen vehicle, or if it's being watched for one of the things such as trafficking, um, amber alerts, um, stolen property, even the person with dementia.
Yes, ma'am. So another, another aspect of the system too, while he's showing you that, if we have a camera that catches footage from one of y'all's surveillance cameras now, and, you know, we're not gonna be able to read a tag from your camera more than likely, but if we find out, if we find out it's a red F-150, the awesome thing about this system is we can go back into the system and search your cameras for a red F-150, and it will actually pull up all red F-150s and then show us the tag number to it, so that we can attach the tag and develop a suspect.
And we have issues in with that, there's a bunch of problems right now on that mountain road, and, you know...
I'm gonna, before you guys stop, since we have a good crowd here tonight, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the public ask a question or two, if you don't mind.
Please, please.
Anybody in the audience have a question?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is...
Can you state your name?
Oh, William Dunham, sorry.
Is it a continuous read? I mean, are you cataloging every tag that goes by constantly, or only ones that are sent up for records?
It catalogs them, so that we can go back and look after the fact for investigative purposes. Like I said, if, you know, if we saw a red F-150 breaking into one of the buildings here in the city, we can go back up to a thirty-day period.
Thirty days?
Thirty days, yes, sir. Yes, sir, thirty days.
And it's deleted completely, so unless they download it and save it to a case file, it, it's gone. So that's really a big thing, we're not trying to be Big Brother, if there's not an active case, there's no reason for that data to stay. Um, and one other thing about the camera itself, it's actually motion activated, so it's not just, um, storing footage of people walking, things like that. Um, if there's not action happening, then it's not capturing, and then it's focused right on that plate, as he showed.
Yes, yes.
Uh, sorry, is it, is it tag, is that, are you talking about the little sticker or the thing, or the whole license plate?
The license plate.
Okay, and what is Flock's done for?
Uh, it's just the word Flock, so Flock Safety is the company name, kinda like flock together, safety and community.
So it was created by, uh, two graduates from Georgia Tech, who created the company and designed the product, so it's a...
To give you the quick, kinda thirty-second spiel, we started actually working directly with neighborhoods, because, uh, maybe you guys have experienced, experienced this, but if there's, you know, a car break-in in a neighborhood, and maybe you guys have doorbell cameras, if you don't capture the license plate, there's nothing Cherokee County or Pickens County can do about it. And so our CEO, as he mentioned, had his neighborhood broken into, and they all had security systems and doorbell cameras, but they didn't have a tag. And so when they looked into getting license plate readers for their HOA, they got quotes from the traditional LPR companies for over a hundred thousand dollars for six cameras. And so he, being an engineer, said, hey, if I can use the components of a cell phone and get solar panels, I can take away that power infrastructure, the wifi that's typically needed, and make it a lot more affordable, but kinda get it out to the masses.
So you must need one that blocks directions, because if I understand correct, New Jersey doesn't require front license plate, and so every installation would have two...
You don't have to.
Directions?
Um, it does only capture one direction of traffic, but if, for example, if you get inbound traffic, if you get all the inbound, they can't come in and, and leave unless they're in the county, or in the city, so, um, you can just get away with getting inbound or outbound, one or the other.
You'd want the notification as they're entering our county, does that make sense?
Or the city.
Or the city.
Or in the Pickens County.
So if we have somebody that's got a stolen vehicle, we don't want them coming in our county, because they're probably coming to steal other stuff. That's when we're getting the alert. So as they're inbound into our area, it'd be no different in the city.
It's beautiful, we'd be leaving the camera to get the...
It would be going into the city, it would be getting the back of the plate.
Right.
And that's why, so we work with the council, and we got a camera we're planning on putting down here into the connector on Five, so that's gonna be getting southbound traffic. So we wouldn't want the city to put a camera going southbound, but we got one right there, so we work with the, the council to have them get one going northbound, and then we would let Pickens County know, don't put one to Pickens line, let's move it somewhere else, so if we know it crossed that line, then we know they're going north. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, Mark, you have a question?
No, you say you're gonna have, like, two cameras on the Pickens County side and two on Cherokee, which I assume you're putting those on the arterial roads. We have other roads within the city that people can come and go, and never even get on the arterial roads.
Correct.
What, what, what kind of coverage, percent of coverage for the city do you think you'll be able to provide?
What we'll do is, we'll work with Flock and with the city to determine, you know, where your highest, um, traffic roads are, and we will more than likely put them on those roads, uh, not the smaller, less traveled roads, um, just to start the system. Um, in a perfect world, yeah, we will put a camera on every road in the city, catching them coming in, but that's just not feasible all the time. Like Cherokee County, for instance, when we first started, we, the, the last set of cameras we bought, I think we bought six, and we, and we strategically placed them around the county. Um, when our command staff allowed us to buy twenty-eight more, what we did is we got a big map of Cherokee County, and we said, well, you know, we wanna cover all the entrances to Cherokee County first, so we have strategically placed those twenty-eight new cameras on the highest trafficked roads coming into the county, so we can catch them, like Lieutenant Downey said, as they come into the county, so we can catch those alerts. Now, is it possible that they come into the county and then commit a crime someplace and then leave and not hit a camera leaving? Yes, that's fine, but like I said before, if we have just a description of the vehicle, we can go back and search it and, um, get a tag number and then match it up. Um, does that answer your question?
Yes, I understand that you're saying, you, in the beginning, until you get more cameras, your actual coverage is somewhat limited.
Yes, sir, it's...
But it's better than nothing.
Exactly.
And, uh, the main point of getting cars or any, entering the city on the arterial roads would be, uh, high probability of any bad actor would, would be using those roads.
Yeah, the higher traffic roads, especially for people that come into your city, most of the time, if they're coming here to commit crimes and steal stuff, they probably don't live here, so they probably don't know their way around very well, so they're probably not gonna come in, you know, one of the smaller backroads, they're gonna come in on the main road. So that's where we would focus our attention at, at first, and that's where we would help you make that, those decisions.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. All right, we appreciate you guys, thank you for coming out.
Thank you, guys, thanks, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on down to, uh, Mayor's Report, and then, right now, I am going to, um, I think I recorded the last time we just had open discussion about, uh, the, the water on Terry Johnson's place, I have, I've gotten the berry, I'm putting something together, let you guys take a look at it before we send it, um, Jeff will have to look at it, and then it'll get sent to him, so, um, hopefully that'll be done for the next couple of weeks. Um, we have training on Tuesday and Wednesday this week, so City Hall will be open.
And Thursday's Veterans Day.
So, anybody need anything, do I got my cell phone, please feel free to call me.
We'll be open Friday.
We will be open Friday, so... All right, next up is gonna be Miranda, the finance report, when he's ready, if you could, give us that.
All right, as this stands, and this is not as of October, this is pretty much as of, um, the end of September, uh, our revenues have come in at a year-to-date actual of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine, that's a sixty-eight percent of, um, we have a sixty-eight percent remaining budget of our revenues. Let me get some out. All right. Our expenditures to date, um, year-to, year-to-date actual is one hundred and eight thousand, Year-to-date actual is $108,433. Remaining budget's 80%. We should be at least at 66 or more. All right, general fund, current balance is $744,000. Special reserve fund three, which is our SPOSS three, our old Cherokee, is $73,922. SPOSS four is at $661,517. SPOSS two, which is the old Pickens, is $443,722. This number already accounts for one payment that we have made to the construction company for Kennesaw Avenue. So, so you'll see a big difference there, which is, we have remaining on SPOSS two, $350,000 towards Kennesaw remaining that we would have already allocated. Uh, SPOSS five, which is the new Cherokee, SPOSS, $582,757. Our cash reserve fund is $166,476. SPOSS 2020, which is the new Pickens SPOSS, is $387,682. And then we also were successful in getting the grant, the new CARES Act funds, American Rescue Act account opened, and that balance is $257,153. So far, I did want to mention that we had budgeted for $96,000 in our insurance premium tax this year. I did look it up, it had came in, in October as $108,934. So that's a good bit higher than what we had budgeted for every year goes up. That's basically all I've got.
Um, Kelsey, you wanna go through the fire department report that's up next?
The third quarter fire report. There were 23 incidents inside the city, seven ambulance transports. The average response time for EMS was nine minutes and seven seconds. County average is 7:43. And the 98% top response time to EMS incidents for the city is 11 minutes, 27 seconds. For Cherokee County, it's 11 minutes and 10 seconds, so they're pretty close. Good.
Do we have that out there? Did the people see that?
It's in the packet.
Anybody that wants to, we had 23, I don't know if you've heard that or not, I know it's, it's kind of hard to hear back there, but we had 23 incidences in the city, seven were ambulance transports.
That's in the packet. It's in, and then it's a quarterly?
And that's, this is a quarterly report.
Okay.
All right, next up is unfinished business, Kennesaw Avenue Drainage Project Plan revisions.
She just needs a approval, so it's in the packet. They just went, they had to go and revise some of the cost estimates when they get in and start digging. There was a couple changes that had to be made. I think it came out in our favor. So, 'cause I think the original subtitle was $55,000, and the changes that were made came out to $51,000, which is in the total in our favor, $44,400.
$4400?
Yeah.
This is not something has to be voted on, is it? It's just a?
I think she just wanted an approval, so I wanted it on here, just so that if we were to write another?
It's just a, yeah, it's an update, letting us know we didn't exceed the, we didn't exceed the max and we actually came in under about $4,440, $40.
And they changed orders on the last page, listed them out where they were a little bit bigger than they were.
I have a question, is the, so is Spring Street still going to be a holder stamp?
Yeah.
So, well, what's changed?
I don't know, she did, I don't, she, I'm not sure. I think they're having to bring in the builder, just them, the builder, and they're sort of digging in there, and they've got a house that they had torn down next to.
Uh, no, it had all kind of wood and pipe and?
I think they just buried the house instead of actually toting it out. Not the one we tore down, the one that had been torn down prior to that and just been like actually buried, so that the dirt that they're pulling out is unusable. So there was a chunk of money with that.
There was also, there was also another pipe that was in there that was, that was causing, I went down and looked at it, it was where they were putting in the junction box. They were getting water in there, I was, I was with Barry when he did it, but we did a, we did the test where we, you put red dye in there to see where it's coming from, and it wasn't coming under Kennesaw, uh, under Spring Street, so it was coming on the other side of the property, somewhere on, on where the house had been torn down. So they had to locate that and so it didn't undermine underneath the junction box. There was that, there, there was unsuitable excavation and backfill, additional grating on the west side of the project, cut a hole in the structure. There was, there was a, a pipe.
That was the pipe that ran all the way down, Kennesaw and dumped into Evan's property. Did it cause problems or more? I think they cut that right there and ran it across the length of the street and piped it in to where it actually would be.
Yeah.
Part of the drainage level, it wasn't just dumping into the hole down.
And this, this paper here will give you a description of what it was and the breakdown of the cost.
What did we have to do with Mr. Johnson's, the portion that was on this property?
He didn't want, he didn't want anything done with it. Basically, don't put one, his words were, don't put one toe on his property, and I said, okay, so I'm, I'm removing it. So I did, and he said, that's fine with him. What I did do after I saw the, the, the water that was dumping, when it was raining, when I looked at it, I did get buried, that was part of the MAXIS engineering dollars, but I did get him to come down and go through that with me, and it is, I think I explained the last council meeting, it is pushing water to the back of their property. There's two options. His, what he wanted us to do was actually pipe it up the hill, down by the railroad track, down Spring Street, and then into that junction box, which is, that's a lot of money, it's not gonna happen. So you can't cover that with SPOSS either, that'd have to be, yes. The only other options would be to open it up, open it up where the, the culprit is that goes underneath Spring Street, right there between the two properties?
Yeah.
And put a new head wall there with a grate that would, the problem is, is you've got all that water coming down past Terry's house and it, it runs right there and just fills up John's yard. Both properties belong to Mr. Johnson, but anyway. And it's, 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 it covers my foot, like it covers my whole shoe. It's not quite ankle deep, but it covers my whole shoe. So there's a lot of water that's coming off there. And he proposed that they do a grate there, channel the, channel that water coming down to hit the grate and then go underneath Spring Street and dump into the stormwater that we currently have going on. He would also have to open it up, I think last time we talked about, there, there was several springs that is between, on Terry's property, on Terry's side of the property, there's several springs there. And one of the, the solutions would have been to done a French drain where you do a big enough pipe under the ground with fingers off from it and then a grate, and then it would get all the water and bring it in and then dump it into the, the drainage ditch that's between the two houses and again, take it under the street and across. So those are things that, hopefully I have all that information and I'll get it back out to you guys so you can take a look at it before the next meeting and then we'll decide which option that we're gonna, we're gonna go with and present it.
I mean, we're still gonna have to get on this property to do that, right?
Yeah, and here's what Jeff said. Jeff said that if he denies that and he doesn't, and he denies either one of the options that we give him based on our budget and so forth, then, then we're off the hook. So it's not, it's not on us anymore. We, we had to come up with an engineered viable option, which we have two of those. We just got them in. I, I can forward those both to your emails so you guys can be reviewing those. We need to come together at our next meeting and take a look at them and decide which option.
I was hoping we could address that while we had all that other work going on.
It's, uh, we, we talked about that and they could open up this drain part here, but it's not gonna address the stud, the stud right here. It's not gonna address what's happening where the water's actually shooting out. That's a whole other piece of, that's a whole other project. So unfortunately. And he, he wouldn't, I mean, I went, we tried to explain to him, I talked with him, I told him, I said, the pipe on, in front of your properties here would eliminate, it would drain the properties and push that water underneath Spring Street. And I tried to explain that to him, he was having none of it, so. He said, yeah, the only thing that he wanted to hear is that and we were piping that, so I told him that, that's not gonna happen, but I'll get him back, we'll get him back an option. All right, back to, back to the, the stuff here. I, I don't think there's anything to vote on here, this is just letting her, letting you guys know that these, there was changes and the changes came out in our favor, so.
Shouldn't they want it to be approved?
What's the version?
All of this was taken out.
So they want to approve it, they want you to approve the change orders. So can I get a motion to approve the change orders?
I might, I'll approve change orders.
Any second.
Can you, if you care to explain that to me real quick, the change order, like the money amounts and stuff?
So the money amount, we're, we're $4,454 to the good, so the change orders, that was, that, that they, they made changes to the project and each one of those changes has a dollar amount associated to it. The change order amount was less than, than what was originally anticipated.
The top section of this is everything that was taken out and this is what was put in.
I mean, that's including removing the work from Mr. Johnson's side of the road, right?
That's what, I mean, all of this right here. It shows everything that was taken out, we went to the estimate, and this is everything that was put in, but it came out in our favor, so he was worried about it all.
Because these, these changes has already happened, correct?
This part, I haven't seen it very well.
Yeah, I think they have, yeah. Changes have already happened too. So the stuff that was removed has already happened and the stuff that's been added has already happened. James, you go first, can I get a second?
I have a second.
Susan, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. City limit signs. Also, I got an email about the Nelson Oaks sign, it says Nelson Oak on it, not Nelson Oaks, can we get a new sign for that?
It's not a name, it's a name. What are the street signs?
No, but that is a street sign.
You're talking about like the street green, like the neighborhood?
No, the green sign, yeah, it's, it's Nelson Oaks.
And you called one time about their neighborhood entrance sign.
Well, they got replaced, but instead of, it got replaced, but instead of putting Nelson Oaks on it, they just put Nelson, Nelson Oak on it.
I did not worry about that.
I know, it was before you.
It is, too.
It was way, it was way before you, so you could just get, get them another time. I think, I think there's two.
Hello?
Is it two of them? Yeah, I believe.
I, I live in Nelson Ridge.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I mean, yes.
Okay, there you go. But we'll get it fixed. I'll look up, I don't know what's going on. Okay, and then city limit signs?
So I just got the data pricing, so we ordered all the street signs, walked back, they picked a list of them, but the art department, the displays was going back and forth sending stuff and they had sent some that had been painted, so we had to get the paint taken off. So they sent the revised drawing and then the pricing, they just sent the pricing in off the first, so. Pricing has gone up because of cost materials, so we're now $148.75 each, we need seven, which is over my purchase limit. And then they'll be shipping, which is $150, $100 bucks. So they did, I don't know, it's $148 each, we need seven of them. But there's, there's still two different options. I think the one that has the white still has a reflective on it, or the white.
So it's a valid 50-plus shipping. So you got $1,050 plus shipping.
I mean, technically, I put a warrant and then it just.
Okay.
So the top one's probably better, because it has an reflection on it. And this is a copy of?
It could be, I could be wrong. I guess it's a shady, that's the difference, correct?
Yeah, 'cause I think this will be reflective, rather than, rather than the gray.
Okay. This is, um, can I get an approval for the $1,050 for the seven entrance signs?
What size are these?
Can I ask a question about that?
36 by 48, they're big, they're like 36 by 48, I think. They're big ones.
This is 34 by 77, is that, I mean, that's gonna be enormous.
No, it's 36 here and 48 there.
Oh, I'm living near the very bottom of the main.
No, I don't remember where they got that. The, what's here, that could be the box that it comes in.
Oh, okay.
The one on the side is 36 by 48.
It's this side of the main street.
No, I mean, I, I have a whole email chain where you can find back and forth, but I only printed out the, the.
I think so, that's gonna be real big, 77.
Nobody can miss for this idiot.
Yeah, he's telling us, he'll, yeah, you wanna just?
So it's 36?
It's 36 by 48.
And we'll verify that it's 36 by 48, so we don't have a, so we don't have a huge sign.
Is that comparable to the, that's pretty a bit bigger than what we used to have?
It's the same size, 36 by 48. They look smaller like when you're driving by them, but when you get up on them, and then somebody keeps stealing them. So it started with just stealing the sign and then somebody went back and stole the post of the sign.
I noticed about Pickens Street, it's been down for a while.
Yeah, now they're looking inside on it. But this has been going on for like a year to get where we actually have a sign, the pricing.
Some kind of special attachment, votes, you know, Stanford.
Yeah, well, I don't know, maybe they, I don't know. I think we got Mickwell or whatever, we just get them to hit, hit the door.
Well, they just, they took the poles and everything. The poles are missing, like, they originally took the sign and then they went back and did the poles.
Could have been seen them.
Come see them, man.
There's somebody, it wasn't that bad, they couldn't get it.
So see them and touch it with it, whatever.
I'm kidding.
Yeah, I need, I need an approval for the $1,050 plus shipping.
Yeah, I like a motion, we approve $1,050.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Sure.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next up is, all in favor, sorry, unanimous. Okay, the next is, uh, security cameras, a pricing update, Kelsey, turn that over to you, because.
Yeah, this is our government stuff. So since we have last approved $13,000 for the cameras, there was some legislation put in place that the company that manufactures our, our current cameras, they can no longer install cameras from that manufacturer per some current legislation. I have a pamphlet over there and sent, it's like 30 pages long, because I knew I was gonna act this up.
I think you've got a copy of it.
No, that's it.
Is this?
No, it's like 30 pages.
We'll get, we'll get a copy for you.
It, um, it has something to do with, I think it originally started with, it was only gonna apply to federal buildings and then within the past few weeks, they implemented to apply to any government buildings. But he said if we apply for any brands, federal, state, anything, it's going to have checkboxes to ask if we have cameras from this manufacturer. He did not recommend that we go take down what we currently have, but he said the stuff that you're going to be putting in place, put the ones in place that you're not gonna have problems with. So there was a cost difference of about $3,000 and he said the new estimate, which was 16, 348 instead of 13, whatever odd amount it was last time. But it was more just kind of covering basis, so we don't have problems. He said if we didn't do grants and we didn't do any of that, I mean, he has a bit of an issue, but he has companies that are having to go in for thousands of dollars for the security stuff and reinstall. So he's not recommending taking anything out, but if something breaks, it does need a new service. And lots of people.
We'll get a grant for it now or when you ship it?
We, any brands that we apply for period will be impacted by it. It's not like brands for that camera, but.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that to Jeff, I'm gonna, I have not reviewed it because it just came in. I'm gonna review it with him and then I'm gonna do more research on it. I, I really hate anything that I feel is gonna need a surveillance of our students.
That's not.
I know.
That's not what that is. They're just gonna ask if we have cameras manufactured by the original manufacturing company on grants that we apply for. So if, if it's ongoing like a maintenance thing, I think that there's probably grace period for ones that are in stock, but if we're continuing to have cameras installed by the camera company that's manufacturing the ones that we don't want you to install and we're applying for grants, then we won't be eligible for the grant.
My thing is, is why is the federal government telling us as a city what cameras we can install and what we can't?
I'm not saying that, I agree with it.
So, yeah, yeah, I know.
Yeah, I, I think we just need to, I live in, yeah, I don't really like that.
I think the, I don't know, I've blocked all of that cameras where they're absolutely necessary, so. Have we looked?
I'll get everybody a copy of these. Can you take a look at it as well? I, I plan on doing, I plan on doing some of them. I know that we, the cameras that we have, we have, the sheriff's departments are the only ones that have access other than what we have in our, our, in Kelsey's thing in case there's an emergency, but that's the only people that have access to those cameras, so it's not.
Since this is over the 10,000 threshold, is that, I know we voted on it last time when it was thirteen, but.
The new amount has to be approved. That's why it's all accounted for, it's all here, there.
I know a bunch of people are using ATC now on their camera systems. Can we get a quote? Try to compare it.
I think it's also because it's plugging into an existing system.
I mean, all the stuff we're buying here, we're almost, with the exception of the cameras.
I mean, I was just saying that I think it's, what I'm saying was because we already have an existing system and this is adding in to that. It's not tucking backing off of, I mean, I don't care what you do with it.
But it kind of seems like these people are hard to get over here when we have a problem that is running.
No, they're not hard to get over. I just didn't want to pay them to come over to repair stuff if we were putting new stuff in. What we've been waiting on is Georgia Power and that agreement and that was a nightmare and then once we had it all in place, then we're taking the building down. So it was nine months of getting everything lined up and then we're taking a building down.
But now we can get them to come repair what we have and then work on the rest of it.
Yeah, that's usually been a few days. It's not an issue getting them out here, but we have to pay them to come to do whatever if it's out of warranty, which is the same with any company.
How long's the cameras been in?
They want to put the, um, several months. They were hit, one of them was hit in a storm and the one that's up on the basketball court up there, he doesn't know, somebody hit it with something and turned the radio signal or the wind was that strong that it actually moved it, because he said those are very, very difficult to move, even if the antenna was good.
So we have two that are down?
Three.
Three that are down?
There's two that are on the community building and the one that's on that one up there.
Can they give us a itemized, you know, break down the floor, what his house do per camera for?
I'm sure he can. He just sent me this. This was.
I think it was on the last one, too. We can pull that for you as well.
The last one's not out, I don't know.
It's not, we do have one that is and it's probably in my office. The, the problem is, is that it's, this has gone up twice already because we haven't done it. It went up three, what was it, $3,000 last time and now we're at $5,000 now?
Well, the, the original one was only a few thousand dollars and that was when we were trying to do, to put the cameras on the basketball court. And then we took one of those off and moved it and then it went from like being like $3,000 to like $8,000 and then from $8,000 to $13,000, $13,000 to $16,000.
We might have to use the last price just because things keep going up.
And it's not, what I'm saying is it's already a system that's in place, so if you get another company out here, they may have to start from scratch.
It's going to cost more than that just to get them to come in, because they'll just take, they'll take all the stuff out, put their own system in there, so you're looking at a lot more. This is just upgrade what we have and to add to those cameras that we talked about. How many cameras was it?
If we were going to consider switching, we should do it before we do all this, was the only reason I mentioned it. Because we're, they're putting a new system in for the extra cameras. One of those, something.
They're doing a.
Thirty-two channel or whatever it was.
They're, yeah, they're adding them.
They have the capacity to add up to thirty-two cameras. We already have sixteen, but we had seventeen cameras. So we have one camera that wasn't operational because we didn't have enough quarters to operate it. Because we had had one camera taken off, because that was when he was trying to add that a few years ago and it wasn't approved. So we have one camera then hooked. And that was when we kind of upgraded the system for like $2,000. And the material cost has just gone through the roof in the last few years.
Everything's out, look at gas, but, um, no.
Most of this is material cost. This isn't labor cost. I mean, in theory, you can have him put in the same stuff we still have. He has it. But if he puts it in, only apply for a brand and there's a checkbox that says, do you have this? Have you installed this in the past however many months? Then you're not going to be eligible for whatever brand it is, whether it's state brand or federal brand.
That's what, you know, I can, I can definitely, I plan on doing that, so I won't have a problem with it.
We gotta get to them and just talk to them every time and see what they're going to do, but we'll do it out of that, too.
Well, hopefully you guys will take a look at that. Have we got cameras in both buildings?
In that one there, where it's kind of in cold, pull up.
Okay, so we need to decide what we're going to do with it, because there'll be two cameras here. So do we want another, do we want another pole when they set that one? Do we want to have them set another one up here where the old police department's at and put it on a pole? Um, you know, that's, that's something that when you and Susan go up there and take a look at that, that's an option.
And why do, excuse me, why does, why does the government not want us to use the manufacturer we're already using?
I have no clue.
They've probably caught them spying or something through the cameras, the company that makes them. Some of those, I remember.
That would be my guess. I think it was originally supposed to only be federal stuff and then.
They were looking at everything.
It went, yeah, and from what Erin had said, originally this wasn't supposed to go into effect for a couple of years and then it was implemented within the past couple of weeks. So, because he had told me when he said the last quote that there was a chance that it could, it could happen within the next couple of years. And then he called the other day and he's like, or emailed him, said, can you call please? And I called and he's like, this literally just went into effect. And he said there was a, somebody that had just lost a contract over it. Because they had one of the cameras in and one of the things that came out already had the line item on there asking if they had a camera in place.
We'll get a copy of this for everybody, put it on the camera if you guys want to come in. I'll go ahead and send Jeff one tonight and then we take a look at it, so.
Put it down on the next one.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll have my table.
Yeah, that sounds good. And if you opt for another pole, then see, that's the way to go, rather than try and go salvage something, then you can, you can go ahead and try and get that taken care of at the same time. So we're going to push this one to the December meeting. All right, next up is going to be the sidewalk repair. I think I explained it pretty much before, uh, when, when we were making amendments, but we have a, we have four more areas up there. Kelsey, you want to Google up, you got from him right before.
Bo Holcomb had sent me an estimate for more areas that he had found that had damage up there and just said that he wanted to have that done while he's already in place with some insurance. He can do all of it for like $100. When he had originally sent it to me, it was in the middle of the month and he told him, I could, he could give me $1,000. So he actually texted me this morning and said that they had to delay last one they thought they were going to put in so they could get one for her to come in to do the inspection. So if you, if we wanted to go ahead and approve any additional ones, you know, it was still on the table because they haven't pulled yet. So it was four more areas.
This is only because it was. This is stuff on pickings. It's not what, it's not.
That all.
This is all pick and straight.
Some of it's private, some of it's raised, needs to be. Yeah, I mean, I've walked along, passed all of them.
They're all up on pick and straight.
Can I get a motion to approve?
The, uh, we don't have a picture of the wooden drain.
That one, we, we already put that up. He just saw these when he was up there getting ready to do it and said, hey, you want us to do this, but that's fine, it was in the middle of the month.
He has to order so much concrete, I think, is the deal, so if he, if he, he could do these places here while he was up there. Makes good sense. So can I get a motion to approve the sidewalk repair?
Can I make a motion?
I can second it. Dave, Dave, all in favor? Unanimous? Next is going to be maxis engineering. At the very top up here, we went over it, um, when we did the amendment, but it tells you the things that that the nine thousand eight hundred is for. Any questions you want to discuss before we vote? Any questions, Nathan?
This pretty much takes care of the changes that was involved in.
Martin, I'm just going to get these in. Yeah, he, it was one of the.
He's ever been in contact with him, told you about that stuff?
He had a little kick to the ceiling lines, so we met, and after we, um, he had had some other lines that was, that been.
Dave, any questions? James, Susan?
Yep.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
Can I make a motion we approve?
The nine thousand eight hundred?
For that later.
The maxis engineering. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
James, Susan, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Okay, new business sanitation truck parking agreement. Kelsey, I know you've been, we're doing that, so.
We could actually have the exact same ones, but I'm making my comment on it, but just.
You just go ahead and talk to.
Yeah.
Okay, at our last meeting, um, we had a conversation, um, in executive session regarding the sanitation truck parking agreement that we had in place with Mr. Jean and most of you who haven't known his past. We have, um, uh, don't have a place yet to park it. We are looking, we do have a realtor looking for a piece of property on the outskirts of Nelson to see if we can find a piece of property that's conducive to parking not only the sanitation truck, but some of our larger equipment. In the interim, we spoke with Mr. Jean's widow and asked her, she, since we have a, um, a gravel pad there already, if she would be willing to let us continue to park the truck there on a month-to-month basis and we would, we would pay her a stipend for that, which she agreed to and.
We voted on it last time, but we just wanted for transparency.
Yeah, we just, for transparency, wanted to make sure everybody knew.
So it was a short, um, thing, a little property.
Next up is the maintenance department equipment replacement. Just the truck, one.
Yes. We got updated pricing to replace two pieces of our equipment. The mower, as soon as it's old, we have in the past been replacing them every six years. The replacement price is $14,500. The guy verbally told me that the trade-in value of one we have would be probably between six and eight thousand and had to come actually look at it to give a definite, which would mean, would be out of pocket roughly eight thousand. One we have now does currently need tires, so just keeping that in mind. And we also got a price to replace the Bobcat tool kit. And the new one would, all of our attachments to them we currently have would work on a new one. So we currently have a blue of 2012. I do believe that it's been rolled a couple of times and then through the wringer. The air conditioner's currently broken and needs a new CV boot. Nelson Tractor's actually been fantastic to work with as far as doing the maintenance and upkeep on it. But when it comes to doing that kind of stuff where it's a machine they're not used to, they have a hard time with it. They had it for five months trying to get some of that stuff done, you just couldn't get it done. So if we're going to keep this on, we're going to have to have it taken out of Atlanta and have it fixed and I think the last tow bill was around $700. So we're kind of in that, that point, we need to decide what to do with it. And then there's something also wrong with the hydraulic thing that, or whatever that button is, that take the attachment off, so they're having to manually, I think, remove it. Ricky said he can get it off, but it's, it's not how, however they normally do it. But it's, we're right at that point where we need to do something instead of continuing to throw any of this one.
Is this the exact replacement size of their piece of equipment?
From what he said, yeah, and I had Ricky look at it and go over it to make sure. The only difference is that this one has a radio. And I think ours does not, but he said if he's having to go sweep the streets at night at, you know, two o'clock in the morning, that he would enjoy having a radio. But I think that would be the only change.
So what's the total on that?
It's $53,000. I think ours was like seventy-something when we bought it.
Did they, or why?
I don't know. I know it was higher.
I think it was a lot less than they expected.
Radio.
And they do trade-ins as well, but he said he couldn't give me a high, or give me an idea of the trade-in until he came and actually looked at it.
How many hours, hours has it on?
Um, I do not have, Ricky told me, and I can't remember.
And those dollars would come from?
Lost.
Need to price.
We got cash in there, so.
Absolutely.
With, with regards to the projects we have.
That's what I was about to say. We will have to factor it in and move something down.
Reinhardt Bobcat, I mean, two different Bobcat companies.
They're only, it took a month and a half to get this price because I called one in Atlanta and apparently they do in flood zones. So I'm only supposed to get a quote from one person because we're in, because they, you call, they ask where you are and so charity. The guy wouldn't call me back. I actually got ahold of his supervisor twice and he kept telling me that he, he told me they named the guy. He told me back, call me back. So I finally called the one in Gainesville and he goes, well, this guy's supposed to call you. And so I'm not talking to him and he won't, he won't even call me back. So the one in Gainesville is the one that actually gave the price, but they have like a, a book price that they call from. It's not a.
Did you call wrong?
I called, this is one in Gainesville.
Yeah, I think Bobcat, mine was not attributed to Bobcat.
Yeah, but they're all, they have sales guys and each sales guy is giving his own, because he goes, well, we're supposed to call him. I said, don't call one. I said, because he won't even call, like, literally it was a month and a half. But, and there was no email, no phone call, no missed calls. And this one, it was within like ten minutes. He called back and then he emailed a quote.
So, um, the, the Bobcat that we, has anybody taken, has anybody taken a look at it? James, have you taken a look at it?
It's pretty rad. I don't know exactly how many hours on it, but I can, I can look and see.
I mean, Ricky keeps up with the maintenance and so, I mean, it's, it's, everything is supposed to be maintained.
But I know we had that one over twice.
Yeah, that we know of.
And then Ricky didn't know it.
Prior to Ricky.
So, um, AC hydraulics and mostly other things was wrong with it?
Tires? No, it's the CV boot. And I have the CV boot. As long, usually as long as we'll order the, the parts, then Nelson Tractor will do it. They just can't figure out, some of the stuff they can't figure out again.
So I know that the main time that we use that thing is we got, we got the tractors and stuff now and we've got the side-by-side, the main time that we should be using it is when we need it, right?
This is used all the time. It, because it has all kinds of attachments, got grabber attachments. This is used more than any other piece of equipment we have. It is, it pretty much does everything, whereas the side-by-sides are you, they may drive those around and throw stuff in the back to get from point A to point B, but it's not like a piece of equipment that actually does anything. Whereas this actually does almost everything.
The lifespan is out because it's 10 years old, too, so we're probably out of warranty on it. I don't know, that's, that's something, maybe thirty hours on it, we'll look at what we have and see if it's, um, because we'd have to move something out. We'll have to move some, some of our, one of our projects out at least.
No, we haven't.
Well, we have government in general, the Cherokee. Cherokee's last.
The new, okay, so, but we, that we have it allocated?
Yeah, if you look, go back and look at our CHP.
Okay.
Yeah, our government, we've not allowed anything for that currently. That's future projects, but this would need to be listed as one of the projects.
They leave her on there.
Okay, and what's the, um, what is, what's the balance in there for the Cherokee's last item right now?
Two hundred, we have $250,000 in government, general government right now.
Okay, counsel, before we, um, before we come back to you guys next, next month with it, what's some things that you want to know?
I'd like to say brochure, just make sure it's exactly the same thing.
Okay.
You called Reinhardt Bobcat, we called fifty different prices when we get past.
Where is that? Reinhardt Bobcat now?
Yeah.
Okay. And you get a price?
Yeah, signifying on the landlord, I, I, we need to get, get late street prices on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had Ricky do it, see if it was.
National Trucking give you the price.
Amazing.
There's nobody else, you bet you.
I don't think he was talking about trading in. He wasn't talking about the newest one we have now.
No, it's the one that, that Jackie uses. Ricky does, Ricky draws. Ricky does, Ricky drives the new one. One Jackie has is six years old, and one Ricky has, I think, a few years, maybe two years ago. I think, I think it was a year and a half ago, because it was just out of warranty recently.
So the action for the, the lawnmower is to get a price from Nelson Tractor?
Exactly.
Did you verify that they have it?
No, they're, they're several months out. Like, you have to order them, and they, because the Bobcat's like four months out, and I think the, the, uh, lawnmower's the same thing. You pre-order them in as they come in. Why are you shaking your head at me?
Because he had to go to Alabama to get his tractor.
Yeah, you order them and you get them when they get them.
So we're going to walk away from here with an action item to get a price for Nelson Tractor for the lawnmower?
Mason tractor.
Mason tractor, I don't know why I said Nelson, Mason, yeah.
Didn't you just want to get miles on something?
Yeah, I'm going to get them out. I'm going to get two of the Masons on the, on the, you know, that's actually, I've come over, but I know, I know this one.
Okay, and then. And then just to go over again, real quick, the Bobcat, it needs repairs, hydraulics, AC, CV boot, ten years old, so their lifespan is, um.
Over lifespan.
Yeah, we've, we've already, uh, like, all that's out. Um, the new cost, we have one estimate for fifty-three K currently, and that's from where?
Bobcat.
Bobcat of Atlanta?
Yeah.
Okay, and you want to, you'd like a Reinhardt Bobcat out of Rome, you'd like another one, and also a brochure.
Is that, was that with the attachments, or was that just the machine itself?
Our attachments, she said, works with it.
I, I asked them just because we already have several, and that we wouldn't have to go purchase additional ones, so I wanted to make sure that what we had.
I mean, if that machine, if that machine is, uh, wore out, the, most of the attachments, should be pretty worn out, you know what I mean?
Depends on which ones, because they'll probably come with like wherever the main one is, the, like, the, the brush that they use for the streets and stuff, you know, and, and. There'll be some that we may end up needing to replace here and there, but if, the other ones, you know, some of them are still fine.
I'm sure the huckin's not replaced.
I think it probably comes with, my assumption is probably the one that we, that's the one that it would come with.
I know they use that brush, they use that brush a lot, kind of.
Yeah, I didn't see it on there, but we, we'll clarify.
Tell my neighbor to re-put it, please.
I mean, it's got a couple of words, y'all.
You need a Bobcat? It says the Luxe Road Packaging Co., backup long-term signals, flasher lights, I don't see it on here. Time speed steerwell, hydraulic hydraulics, beverage holders, Bobcat tank, load support, control management, HVAC, UBS charger, engine guard, triaxle, slip, limited slip triaxle, engine hydraulic, um, motor shutdown, LED headlights. No, I can't see it, well, maybe I'll miss that. We'll, we'll ask about it. Okay, that's it for tonight, can I get a motion to adjourn? Second? Martha? All in favor? Unannounced, thank you.